Amy Felicia Hura, 259 Mathias Street, Salem. I'm a Salem resident, but I'm also a teacher in the city of Lynn. I started my career in Salem. I'm a career changer. I came home, I became a teacher. And I wasn't properly trained, and I had to find a job elsewhere because I didn't have a license, I didn't know about the licensing system. But I went to Lynn, and I've thrived there. But this is my home. And I came here to support not just Salem residents, but teachers. Because other states don't require us to go through the amount of training that we do. We're required to have a master's degree, we're required to have licenses, and we pay for them ourselves. We work 60 hours a week, sometimes seven days a week, and we work hard. And I know this is true of anyone who's a teacher. Everything that that woman just said about carrying people in the classroom, you don't do this job for the money. You don't work 60 hours a week, you put your own family on hold for the money. It's for the kids. And we do work hard. And when you do change the curriculum every year, or you adopt a new curriculum to receive federal money, and we have to rewrite everything and rewrite every lesson, we do it. But it takes a lot of time, and we do it. But you can't expect change in one year. If the charter schools can get, or this new, whatever they are, if they can get four years, five years to make a turnaround, they even said it on their own website that they need more than four years, then you should give Bentley a chance. Give them a chance.
Hi. My name is Danielle Burnett. I have two children in Bentley School. You can probably tell from the green t-shirt. My youngest is in kindergarten with Ms. Maher, who is wonderful. My son is high-functioning autism. He has an IEP through the Salem Public Schools. We worked very hard on that IEP. Thank you, Margaret. We worked very hard on my other son's IEP, who has the lovely Ms. Panetton here as his second-grade teacher, and she is phenomenal, and I have to applaud you for your amazing work this year. I apologize that I'm doing this now, but my children have an early night, and my third grader has MCAS testing tomorrow, so I'm going to go do that and get him prepared for that for tomorrow. The reason that I am here, the reason that I am getting up on the microphone is because I, looking like this, thank you cameras, is because I feel honestly in my heart that there's a reason that you obviously want this program. You brought in Blueprint for a reason. You brought in Blueprint because you think that they have a vision, they have something that they can offer, that they can bring to the table. The company's name is called Blueprint. Where's the Blueprint? I haven't seen it. I've seen a rough draft, I've seen estimations, I've seen ideas. I've not seen a Blueprint. I have not seen what their plan is over the next three years. I haven't seen a really high-functioning, you know, a real in-depth plan of what they're going to do that is any different from what Bentley has done over the past year and a half. And my question is, if you are going to take such a big leap of faith as to bring in an outside organization as opposed to bringing in an exterior person or, you know, that kind of thing to work as a liaison between Bentley and the school committee, as opposed to simply bringing in an outside organization, you might want to maybe take a step back and, as opposed to having a final vote this evening, wait for Blueprint to come up with a Blueprint. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Takas Welch, and I live at 7 Crowdes Street, Salem, Mass. And I just want to go on the comments that was made earlier by Mr. Dufry about having the courage. And I believe that you should absolutely take courage, but the courage should be to stand behind the Bentley School commitment. It's been a three-year turnaround. It is going back on word, going back on faith, going back on the commitment that you made. You are facing this on not even seeing the results of the MCAS that will be taking place tomorrow, that took place in March. So how can you say that they have not made any progress? I think that that's where your courage comes, in supporting the school and supporting the commitment that was made. And as a taxpayer, that's where I want to spend our money, and our time, and our commitment being spent. I have two kids that went through the Salem school system. They're doing remarkably well, and they started out at Bentley in their preschool. So I find it unbelievably unfair that you're not honoring that three-year commitment. And that's where the courage is, to make the change and honor that. Thank you.
My name is Scott Andre. I live at 12 Grant Road in Salem. And I would just ask that we do not do a final vote tonight, seeing as some of the members have not even read the final MOU. That seems like that would be a bad thing to do.
My name is Fawaz Abu Sharq Fuzzy for Harrison Road. I just want to have a comment. What happened in Lawrence was a good thing, but we have to understand, we are not Lawrence for one major difference. That was receivership. Our superintendent does not have the power, doesn't have the authorities that that gentleman have. Neither does our school committee. That gentleman can have the whole city agree on something, and he come and say, "No, thank you," and the opposite. So when we do those decisions, we have to put this in consideration. It has to be cleared in the contract and in everybody that's going to receive, because that power is huge in moving forward or just basically having another wasted time and wasted money. I do believe, before we give a chance to somebody from outside, we should give our people the same amount of time and chance that we're willing to risk it with others before we jump. If for some reason some people don't see that, and obviously I don't have the authority with this, then we have to be careful on the other things to look. And when we bring a model, we have to see if it is really a model that we can even look at. Because I don't think we can look at Lawrence. Maybe we can learn from some of their experiences, but unless we give Dr. Russell the same authorities and power, and the school committee doesn't, I mean, no matter what decision they make, with all due respect, here it's not, you know, there it's not as binding to them and to their decision. I don't know how much saying we will have. Obviously, their politics doesn't matter because of the power the receivership has. Here, the politics matter between the school committee, between people who are looking at their next step, or next election, or next position, et cetera. And that somehow will affect many of those slower decisions as well. So please, look deeper and, I'm going to use Mr. Fleming's term, exit strategy is as important as the contract in those circumstances. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from the committee? I'm sorry for the audience.
Hi. My name is Amy Russell. I live at 7 Debonica Street in Salem. I've been to a lot of meetings about Blueprint and Bentley, and I've had three children go through Bentley School. I feel very strongly, I agree with what a lot of other people said, is that I really hope the school committee will have the courage to do what's best for Bentley. And I think instead of doing the knee-jerk, clearly correct thing and getting Blueprint, I think we should give Bentley more time. It's only been a year and a half, we're supposed to get three years. They've done a lot of really good programs. I'm at the Bentley, and they're working on a lot of the programs. You know, for example, the TLA reading consultants that are using in Lawrence have had a lot of good effect with. That started recently, and it was implemented in 11 classes, now all the classes have it. I think it's doing a lot of great things, and you'd give it more time. Blueprint's a big, people even tutoring a lot. Well, they have tutors in a lot of the classrooms, the Y's are using tutoring, morning and after-school tutors as well. These are all great things Bentley's doing, and I feel like you're not giving it enough time. I just think everyone's in a rush to get the scores up. Oh, make it from a Level 4 to a Level 3 or Level 2. These things don't happen overnight. Blueprint was quoted as saying that these things take time. All right, it takes time to improve. Well, the Bentley School is going to need more time to improve. I don't understand also how the superintendent can't be the one to choose a new principal. He's been vested in this school system for a long time. Someone outside of the school system is picking the person to take over. I just don't understand that. You know, I think everyone has all good intentions, and they feel that we have to be accountable for how the kids are doing, but I just don't want you to rest of judgment, and I want you guys to have the courage to do the right thing for the teachers. Listening to the man from Lawrence, I didn't hear that any of their teachers had to reapply for the jobs. Yes, some of them got shuffled around. But these teachers that have worked so hard in very challenging populations, you know, now they have to reapply for their jobs, and some of them won't come back, and they've worked so hard. I don't understand that at all. And I just hope that you can consider the livelihood of the teachers and the emotional best interest of the children. To have all these new faces in the school, Mrs. Montivecki's been there forever, and she knows these parents, these students, and to bring someone in totally new, yeah, they may have a lot of good ideas. I wish you could have people working with the school instead of bringing in someone new. Help the school, give them more support, keep working on these programs. You know, I really want you to think about what's best for these students, these teachers. And I don't think necessarily Blueprint is the quick fix, the big answer for all this.
Other comments or questions from members of the audience? Seeing that, we'll move over to the school committee. We do have an action item before us on the agenda with respect to the memorandum of understanding with Empower Schools and Blueprint Network, with the implementation of a turnaround partnership for the Bentley Elementary School. Do you entertain a motion at this time?
Madam Chairman, I would move...
I'm sorry, Dr. Walsh, I recognize Miss Hunt. I don't know if you're arguing.
No, I did not.
I'm sorry, I thought I said it fairly loud. Ms. Hunt?
I would make a motion to approve that MOU as presented.
To approve?
Which may have been...
Can't hear you. We can't hear anything.
So to be clear, I'll repeat it, Ms. Hunt made a motion to approve the MOU as presented. Is there a second on that motion? Seconded by Mr. Bryant, under discussion.
An amendment to the motion. I move to delay action on the MOU issue until we receive 2014 MCAS scores and review most recent ANET scores. Second.
To delay any action on the MOU, and seconded by Mr. Fleming. We have an underlying motion to approve it and an amendment. On the amendment, we can certainly have discussion with respect to that item. Mr. Fleming?
I think this committee ignored what the Bentley faculty and the Bentley co-leaders brought to us two months ago, and the results were deadpan. What we didn't look at is the increase in ANET scores in the second grade that they presented to us. We ignored that. We all ignored that. That increase is in the constituency that these people have reached in the last year and a half. That was the start of a measure of uptick. That was really the measure of what these people are doing at that school. Therefore, we should at least look at the real measuring stick, MCAS this year, in order to see if in fact those ANET scores predict what should be an uptick, at least in those, in the first and second, in the second grade, at least show that there is an uptick in the MCAS scores at this time.
Any further discussion with respect to the amendment? The amendment would defer action on the MOU.
I did notice Mr. Riley did remark that he's looking forward to better MCAS scores this year in his second year through, and so is the Bentley School, but apparently that's okay for Lawrence and not okay for Bentley.
Anything else for comments with respect to the amendment? There's no other comments, I would call for a vote on the amendment.
Roll call vote.
Dr. Walsh has requested a roll call. Those voting in support, a yea vote would be to defer any action on the MOU until post MCAS results, and a nay vote would be to not support the amendment. Ms. Taco, would you please call a roll?
Ms. Hunt?
Nay.
Mr. Bryant?
Nay.
Ms. Emerald?
Nay.
Mr. Fleming?
Yea.
Dr. Walsh?
Yes.
May I address the call?
No. Seven members voting aye. I apologize, I'm sorry.
Nay.
I'm normally the last one called. Seven members voting, five in the negative, two in the affirmative, the amendment will not pass.
I have an amendment, Madam Chairman.
Dr. Walsh?
I move to delay action on the MOU until the School Works Organization appears before this committee to explain the reasons for the sometimes stark differences between the earlier and later versions of their mentoring reports. Second.
Motion made by Dr. Walsh to defer any actions until School Works personnel come before the committee, seconded by Mr. Fleming. Any further discussion on this item? Ms. Hunt? Do we have a member of the Department of Education here who could speak to that? We do. I did see Lisa Zai, who was here earlier. I don't know if she is still here. Oops, sorry, Lise. You're back there, so...
I did not ask for a member of the Department of Education, I asked for someone from School Works. That's not germane to the motion. I don't care what the DESE has to say about School Works, they are an independent contractor.
Great. Motion, the amendment would be to defer action on the MOU pending that. Any further discussion with respect to Dr. Walsh's amendment? Is that, you're looking to be recognized, Dr. Walsh?
Yes, if nobody else is, I'll wait for anybody else.
No, no, I just wasn't sure if you were...
Just a few facts involved with this particular one. School Works is a vendor. These are all just facts. School Works is a vendor working under contracts approved by the Commissioner of Education. School Works preliminary draft could be described as showing real progress. The Commissioner has stated publicly his pleasure regarding the circumstances in Salem to take over the Bentley School. It is a fact that vendors tend not to bite the hand that feeds them. It is a fact that the report that we have before us has been altered. These are all just statements of fact. How they're related and what conclusions you draw is up to you and up to the public.
Mr. Fleming?
I think the alteration between the preliminary report and the final report is really misfeasance, malfeasance, and any other feasance that I can think of.
Anything else, any other comments with respect to the agenda?
This has to do with a very important thing, so we will ask that question and point out some things. It has been by this committee, maybe by individuals...
This is with respect to the amendment, Dr. Walsh? This is with respect to the amendment?
Uh, no, I'm sorry.
So we do have an amendment that would defer any action...
Roll call vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Fleming, I didn't want to offer a comment with respect to the amendment. Thank you. We did have a communication, I mean, I think it's fair to point out that the superintendent also wrote to DESE to express concern with respect to the status of where things are with the current turnaround plan. We did receive communication from the Commissioner that did point out, I think it's important that that was, the School Works report was not the only information that they relied on. And I'll just read from the last sentence. "As you know, PPI combines information about narrowing proficiency gaps, growth, and graduation dropout rates into a number between zero and 100, where 75 or higher indicates that a school is on track towards meeting its proficiency gap narrowing goals. From 2012 to 2013, Bentley's PPI dropped 50 points from 70 to 20. No other school in Bentley's Level 4 cohort experienced a similar decrease in PPI." I raised that because I think it's fair to say, I could go on to read this letter, but I think it's fair to say that the Commissioner relied on a series of items. Certainly, the School Works report may have been one of them, but there were other indicators with respect to why they're supporting the current position with respect to the restart model and the desire by the school committee to enter into an MOU. Dr. Walsh?
If I may, how did the Commissioner know about that PPI?
This is from his letter. I'm assuming that DESE, DESE has information that they're using. These are...
From last year's MCAS.
Correct. But in year one, so just to be clear, in year one, it's a fairly significant drop. I think, as you know, at the last, I guess, two meetings ago at the Bentley School, where we did have the Associate Commissioner, Lisa Zai, here, she also shared with us information from other turnaround experiences, where the vast majority of turnaround schools that came out of Level 4 within a three-year period saw in fact increases in year one, not significant decreases. And in fact, sometimes that transformational line has in fact not led to the year-one increases that other school districts have experienced. I think it's fair to say, there's a lot of information, I don't, I understand the question and the concern with respect to School Works, but I do think there were other factors besides the School Works report.
Of course, it's also pointed out, those PPIs and all that stuff, very nice, it does bring up what Ms. Harrington remarked, though, that, you know, was whatever the reading plan of the year was. And that's very difficult for teachers to do. And also that the comment of it taking more than a year to make an impact seems to be okay for Blueprint, but not for Bentley. It's just very confusing.
Dr. Walsh, I think it's fair to say, you're right. I don't think it's the fault of the teachers at Bentley that the reading program didn't work out the first year. We can certainly turn the mirror back, right back on ourselves.
Absolutely.
We are in that predicament, where there has not been progress as much progress as we'd like in that year, in that first year. And in fact, there's been some significant dropping in certain areas, and that's not a good sign going forward. So regardless of what the School Works report says, I think there are other factors and indicators, and that's the only point I was trying to raise with respect to the amendment that you raised with bringing in the School Works personnel. If there are no other comments, we can certainly move on this particular motion and have the school secretary call vote.
No votes of motion.
The motion was to defer any action on the MOU until the School Works personnel could come before the school today.
Mr. Schult?
Nay.
Mr. Fleming?
Yea.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Emerald?
Nay.
Ms. Hunt?
Nay.
Mr. Bryant?
Nay.
No. Seven members voting, five in the negative, two in the affirmative, the matter does not carry. We do have the underlying motion that was made by Ms. Hunt, seconded by Mr. Bryant, to support the MOU as presented and approve that with the understanding that we're entering into an agreement with Empower Schools and Blueprint with the implementation of a turnaround partnership with the Bentley Elementary School. Mr. Fleming?
Yes. I would describe this process as merely a rush to judgment.
Yes.
We have had absolutely limited, limited, limited exposure to any other EMO or anything else. We were just handed this whole package and said, "You got to vote on it on May 5th." Our own process offered three years to create a turnaround. We never gave that present faculty or his leadership a chance to complete the test. We never gave the current faculty and its leadership a chance to give a parallel road to Blueprint and Empower. I asked this committee to at least take a suggestion made by the faculty that they look in and see what they could do in terms of improving what's already been done, and this committee said, "No, we don't want to hear from them." This school committee never had a chance to see any other private operator other than Blueprint. Blueprint has a very short history and a very limited resume. No mass school has ever done this in year two, I don't think. I hear Lawrence, I hear Boston, but this is year two. No mass school, I don't think, has ever done this. Taken it away from their own people and handed it off to a corporate... This MOU is deducted. This very school committee and its superintendent will lose most of its authority and oversight over the Bentley, and the Bentley will be governed as a Horace Mann charter school. And at least I, as a member of this committee, know how hot it is to govern with a board of trustees and a Horace Mann charter school. I'm shocked that lawyers say that it's okay that anybody in Massachusetts other than a superintendent can pick a principal in a Massachusetts school. I'm shocked to hear lawyers say that. Shocked. That's the law of this Commonwealth. Not to modify it, not to water it down, it has to be at least what that Lawrence superintendent, Mr. Riley, has. At least a recommendation, and then he has the final say. That's not the case with this MOU. It's a big, big hole in this MOU, and it'll come back to bite this city and this school committee later on. Why isn't there an exit strategy? Why is there a resistance to an exit strategy? Why isn't there a set procedure where in 60 days we can dump Empower? We can dump Blueprint? No, they don't want that. It's going to go on at least for a six-year period, which I think is violated Massachusetts law. So I don't understand why the fight over not accepting an exit strategy. If we're not satisfied, if the results come back and they're terrible, I want them out of here, and I want them out of here. Will all the new teachers hired be certified? Will they be experienced? My reading of EMOs is that they hire the youngest, sometimes uncertified, teachers, and they come in and they pay them less bucks, and that's what you get. I think I'd rather stay with the experienced, certified faculty. The MOU has gutted most of the protections offered by the union contract to those teachers who will be at Bentley. Gutted, taken out, destroyed. Those teachers, they will not have the protections of that contract. They might be paying union dues, but they won't have protections like Salem teachers should have. And therefore, I say, and I speak to anybody in labor, that this is an anti-labor, anti... Remember who is voting yes and who is voting no tonight because I'm ready to ask you to remember. Staggy implementation. Why? Why is it stagnant? Why not take the whole school over? Oh, it might be a little difficult the first year. Well, our people do it, our people do it K through 5. They can't do it K through 5 the first year, baloney. Six years minimum, minimum. I wouldn't sign this contract if... I'm trying to watch, by the way. Six years. I mean, I can't understand it. I think it's violated state law. I tried to use one example that I have personal experience with. I can't hire certain managers for more than five years. The contract has to go out and be renewed. I also think, although it might be permitted under this takeover by the department, I know it might be permitted, but why, wasn't there a competitive process? I know in public service, we ask for transparency, and we ask for... Where's the competition? Where's the transparency? None exists. For those reasons, I'm voting against this tonight.
Mr. Fleming is a practicing attorney. That apparently makes a difference. I think he has some excellent, excellent points, and I would caution my fellow members that if we are doing things illegal, we will pay for it. I thought that the relationship between our and the people in theirs was more of a party atmosphere than a contract negotiation. I saw no vetting of Blueprint throughout this entire process. Nobody checked with those Boston surveys to find out whether they were accurate or not. Nobody checked. Nobody checked with people from the Colorado State Teachers Association. I tried to call schools that Blueprint runs in Colorado, they didn't answer the phone. Nobody asked about information that's clearly available from Houston. I'm not saying that the people who make these accusations are right, but darn it, if you're going to vet someone, then vet them. Don't watch, Russell, in the instances where you're still allowed to hire principals, that you vet your candidates more closely than this committee has vetted Blueprint. It's apparently more than sufficient that they're friends of Mr. Gabrielli and favorites of Commissioner Chester. On the inconsistency of approach to this issue by committing members. This action is supposedly data-driven. This committee took a very difficult and controversial vote last spring. The debate involved data that compared two schools, none of which was contested. Members of this committee found it convenient to ignore that data. Now they insist that we need to follow the data, at least to the extent that it favors their position.
That's right.
Last spring, now interestingly enough, you heard people talk here tonight, you heard people talk at the dog and pony show down at the Bentley School, and you heard probably 30 parents speak, and one person, one person spoke in favor of Blueprint. Every parent there was basically saying, leave us alone. Last spring, the opinions and concerns of the school's parents in that issue were uttermost in the minds of some members. Those who voted to act against the wishes of the vocal parents were castigated as not caring about parents. This year, the very same people have given short shrift to Bentley parental concerns. They were given one evening, at least half of which was given over to repetition of the Blueprint sales pitch. The parental comments on that evening, as I said, were nearly unanimously of the leave-us-alone variety. So I guess I need to ask the question if there's some difference, of which I'm not aware, in the political clug of one parental group as compared to one another. This committee, by its two votes on the amendments, has just demonstrated that it has no interest in considering either the most recent MCAS data or recent ANET indications of progress. After tonight, that information will be as useful as others on the poll. By the way, the second grade ANET scores will bode well, as I believe it was the Fleming pointed out, for next year's third grade MCAS. I wonder who'll be taking the bows for those scores. This action is not aided by any threat from the DESE. This came from this committee, or from particular regions of this committee. Some might call it panic. Some might describe other motives. Whatever they are, I believe it to be precipitous, and I'm warranted. It's also important to note that if these people did all this, and they did not succeed, then what we're talking about happening tonight would happen next year. And it's not even a case of you don't know who you get, because the close relationship between Commissioner Chester, Mr. Gabrielli, and Blueprint should be pointed out here. The Bentley community were given the full chance it thought it had, and then failed to turn around, that these same folks would be here per order of Mr. Chester, whom dear friends they appear to be. Thank you.
I'd just like to point out that so much of this discussion has... the implication is that this decision is a decision that defines the cause of Bentley's three and four percent percentile ranking in the state, that the cause is the teachers. The cause is not the teachers. The cause has never been the teachers. The cause is not the parents. The cause is not the students. The cause is the leadership. The leadership, the past leadership of the school committee, the past leadership in central office, the past leadership of the union, leadership, leadership, leadership. That is why we are here. All right? So now, what we're trying to do is change course and make some dramatic changes, because we've been painted into a very, very tight, uncomfortable corner, and I see that we have... my opinion is that we have to do that now, because it would never have happened in the last school committee, or the school committee before that, or the school committee before that, because they did not look at the data, they did not look at and not acknowledge a persistent decline in achievement among every demographic of our student population. They chose not to, because they were either anti-MCAS, or anti-authority, or anti-leadership, or anti-decision-making that benefits the students. Maybe they're just anti-students, I don't know. But this is the result of years and years and years of neglect at the leadership level.
Through you, through the chair, through Mr. Schultz?
There are other folks who have comments.
Oh, fine, fine, absolutely.
I'm making sure we hear from everyone.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Are there questions or comments from committee members? I know, Dr. Russell, you'd like to offer some comments as well.
If I may, Your Honor, I do think in procedure that the committee members have preference over superintendent.
Are there any other committee members who would like to speak?
I think that I'm trying to give everyone an opportunity, Dr. Walsh. Yes, Dr. Walsh?
Through you, to Mr. Schultz. If it is a matter of leadership, Mr. Schultz, and if Blueprint and everybody in this room has praised Gabriella Montivecki to the skies, would you accept an amendment that held this off and appointed Gabriella Montivecki principal of the Bentley School?
Mr. Schultz, that's really out of order. I don't think it's really our duty to answer questions like that around a personnel basis. If you still, if you want to answer that as part of your secondary comments, you may, but let's move on. I think Dr. Russell has some comments, I hope there are other committee members who also want to talk about this one.
Sure. Just not directly in response to what Dr. Walsh or Mr. Schultz said, but I want to echo that this isn't about blaming a person or putting someone up to judge somebody who's been working very hard over the past 12 years at Bentley. It's about more putting someone up to judge somebody who's been working very hard over the past 12 years at Bentley. It's about more what Mr. Riley referred to, which is that sometimes you need a necessary disruption, disruptive innovation, so that we can resettle and reset a culture. And it's not, again, about a judgment of particular human beings, but of the alignment of the system. And so when we take this vote tonight, I will be voting for disagreement, because I believe we do need to disrupt, and we do need to realign at Bentley and in the district. And it's not about a judgment on the teachers at Bentley or the leadership, the current leadership there right now.
Are there questions or comments? Ms. Emerald?
I just wanted to mention a few things. One is that there is a termination clause in the contract on page 16, section 40. As far as the term, the appointment of the principal, the MOU that was signed to start the Horace Mann Charter by Mr. Fleming, Dr. Walsh, Ms. Driscoll, and Mr. Bryan, also gave the superintendent only the power to approve the appointment, as well as to, in accordance with the Horace Mann Charter School law, as well as to support the term, suggest the termination, support the termination, but not to withhold it unnecessarily. I can pass it down, but there's... this contract is, my understanding, a one-year phase-in with a possible extension if something happens in the first-year phase-in, and that it will actually change over to a MOU, which will have to come back to this committee and be approved by this committee, and it contains some of that language that will be in the MOU. We did receive a letter that Commissioner Chester is requiring a change, and I would ask that Dr. Walsh...
Not interrupt committee members, but I think everyone's trying to make sure we maintain it with some respect and...
I was talking myself, I'm sorry.
Maybe I misread the letter. And I think that's all.
May I comment on... Ms. Emerald's comment.
Mr. Fleming?
Thank you. That's revisionist history. When that school was established, and Mr. William Cameron was the superintendent, and I was on this committee, and Mr. Cameron picked the principal at that school, and he did not have any qualifying input whatsoever. He picked the person.
Mr. Bryan?
May I copy, yes, to Mr. Fleming's comment. I was actually, it was a search committee to interview principals, and so, and Dr. Cameron happened to be on that search committee, along with myself, and I believe another school committee member. So it was not the sole discretion of the superintendent to select the principal.
But you recommended three people to him, he picked...
We actually recommended one to him.
Ms. Emerald? And not really being revisionist, he was actually not only on the founding committee, but he was also, Dr. Cameron was also a board member, so that he was part of the board, which I don't believe that there's anything in the Horace Mann Charter law, Horace Mann Charter law, not regular charter school law, Horace Mann Charter law, that prohibits the superintendent to be part of the founding committee or the final committee.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, I think it's only fair to address Dr. Walsh's question to me about Gabrielle's... my assessment of Ms. Montivecki's credentials as a school principal. I think she, of course, from every source that I've heard from, from my own conversations with Montivecki, I can conclude that she would be a phenomenal principal, and I hope she remains a principal in this district. I think the, it's, the position that Bentley is in right now is too heavy a lift in the system that we have now, right? I think we need the autonomies. And it's not about getting rid of Ms. Montivecki as principal, that's not it at all. We need autonomies, we need staffing autonomies, we need curriculum autonomies, we need instructional autonomies, we need all of those sorts of things. This should in no way, this decision, although I realize it's tough for people within Bentley to understand this, but in my, of course, in my thinking, I'm not blaming any of the teachers, I'm certainly not blaming the leadership in the school now, because we went from four to three percent in one year. From four percent to three percent of K5s in the Commonwealth, right? We had three years to turn around and to meet certain benchmarks that we really didn't have, we assessed as kind of an impossible task, given the trajectories that we know about, right? That's what we're basing this decision on, not as, you know, any kind of distrust of what's going on in the school now. That has not entered into my calculus that would lead up to my decision tonight.
Thank you. There's no other comments, I'll offer a few, and then I guess we can hear from Dr. Russell. So I'm looking out in this room, and it strikes me that two and a half, three years ago, when the Level Four designation came down for the state, folks have heard me describe it this way in the past, it really was a punch in the gut. We had spent lots of time on the school committee, really being frustrated that we weren't moving the needle. We had thrown a lot of things at the wall, trying to see what was going to stick to see our student improvements more sustainable. We'd see pockets of success in one particular area, but we never really saw our scores, our standardized test scores, improve. We'd have principals come out every year, trot out their school improvement plans, what they were going to do, we'd discuss MCAS results, where we just weren't seeing strong enough improvements. But we weren't necessarily strategic. We didn't always provide the level of support needed at a district level. We didn't use data. We got a Level Four designation in our Level Three report, our assessment from DESI, right around the same time, and they pointed out a lot of the failings within the district in terms of support systems that weren't set up, curriculum not aligned, no use of data. I mean, there was a long, frankly, laundry list of things that were not done well enough. We got that Level Four designation, we had a meeting in Salem State at the Enterprise Center, maybe some of you were there, and this committee said, we're going to come together. We weren't going to... Bentley was the Level Four school, but we made it very clear, this was not about Bentley. This was about our district, what we could do to improve, what those areas were that we were going to focus on. And frankly, we've set out to do that the last several years. Bentley became, frankly, the first and foremost priority. We worked together to put a stakeholders group in place, we identified the transformational model, we fought hard for a grant that we got, half a million dollars a year, we built supports both in the district and at Bentley. We were building it and flying it at the same time. And we've made some successful developments. No one denies that we've had some achievement in certain areas, Grade Two in particular. We didn't have a formative testing tool before all of the designation came down. We have one now, we can track it. We didn't have lab classrooms, we didn't have interventions and supports. With all of that, in the first year, Bentley went from the bottom fourth percentile in the state to the bottom third percentile in the state. We saw the PPI, as I indicated earlier, drop another 50 points, more than any other Level Four school in our cohort. It's not easy, these are not easy decisions. I live around this room, I know many of you, some of you are neighbors, some of you I've known for a long period of time. But ultimately, I and the people up here are accountable and responsible, and for too long, we haven't been willing to really make hard decisions that are in the best interest of kids. So when people say we're panicked, or it's a rush to judgment, I look at the numbers. In 2012, 107 out of 153 students in ELA at Bentley scored in the warning or needs improvement. 112 out of 154 students in math. In 2013, grade four math, 40 out of 48 students in warning and needs improvement. 2013, 160 out of 157 tested in ELA were in warning and needs improvement. Guys, I know this is hard. It's hard for me, but these kids have to have another path. So panic? No, it's not panic. But I got to tell you, I'm less worried about a Level Five, and more worried about what we're doing to these kids and these families who aren't getting the tools they need to succeed. And we can debate what's the best way to make that happen, but we have opted for this transformational model. We've put money behind it, we've put energy behind it, and we had some of the best people in that Bentley building working towards it, and the first year and a half, you have to acknowledge, we haven't had the type of success that we really needed to have. There is a sense of urgency, not just because of the kids involved, not just because of Level Five, but our public schools and the quality of our public schools define our community. It is the number one issue in the city of Salem right now that people have on their minds, whether it's the community surveys we're taking in-house, whether it's surveys that they're doing in gateway cities, up where Salem is one, and they've done a large sample here. People are worried, they're concerned, they're making decisions to either leave our community or not enroll their kids here. My kids are in our public schools, having a great experience. There was a recent article in the Globe, many of you probably read it, Sunday Globe, terrific profile on Salem. Museums, culture, restaurants, Rachel's school was highlighted. One con, they listed. You've read the article, many of you in this room. One con of public schools, failing public schools. Do you know what that's like to read that? I know it must bother you as much as it bothers me. But what's worse, the perception it gives for our city. We are not a Level Five city. Bentley is not a Level Five city. But the current things that we're doing here need extra, need an extra dose. Some people look at it like we're waving the white flag at Bentley, like somehow we're surrendering to some large corporate interest. The corporate interest is Matt Spengler from Blueprint, a former principal, doing pretty innovative things, and it's really not feared a villain- innovative things, and it's really not fair to villainize him or his organization. We're looking to partner with teachers who will be union members. I hope many of you choose to stay and reapply, and those who don't, those who don't have the options in our district will be protections in place, and those who do will have a terrific opportunity to work in a school that we think needs something extra, that we're proud of, and that we want everybody else to be proud of as well. Why should we wait? Why should we wait another year and a half? What am I supposed to tell the families at the Bentley School whose kids aren't getting enough of what they need to succeed? And just, "Let's wait till we're Level 5, and then we can bring Blueprint in?" That really makes no sense to me. We've been put on notice with the Level 4, and frankly, we've known about some of the sense of urgency that we haven't shown before. We know that we needed to. So I don't want to disappoint people. I really don't. I enjoy working with many of the staff at the Bentley School, Gabrielle in particular, Diane certainly coming on board and helping us out there, and many others. But we can't wait. The kids can't afford for us to wait. And as much as disruption and divisiveness that this has created is not something that I enjoy, it's the right decision for the kids and families, and I'm looking forward to the partnership with Blueprint. I love listening to models where there's different attempts within one district, and the collaboration, and the more time, and some of the autonomies, yeah, that's been powerful, too. So I'm looking forward to voting for this. I'm looking forward to the new Bentley, and I hope that people will come together after this is done, recognize the opportunity that we have, not only to remake Bentley, but to remake our entire school district and make our community a better place all around. Dr. Russell?
Thank you, Maire Drieschel. That's a couple of comments to follow. First of all, I want to let you know that you will get home before midnight, because I have no principal appointments to make tonight, so if anyone's worried about that, I know that this is a difficult situation. I'm living it every day, as many of you are. First, I want to thank you for being here. I genuinely appreciate your interest, and I know, regardless of whether you agree or disagree with the different folks here around this table, it is important to participate in this process. At the risk of being redundant, there's a couple of points I want to make. I think we all know these are uncertain circumstances, and yes, I do have mixed feelings about them. I'm not going to hide from that. I have concerns, and we're working, I'm working every day to try to address them. I don't think it's helpful to point fingers or to offer theories. I think as adults, and as people that our children depend on, both in the classroom and in the home, we all have a responsibility to keep things as constructive as we can, not only on the what we do, but also the how we do it. Bentley is making some progress. I need to be clear about that. There's all sorts of different versions of which report says what. Bentley is making progress. The concerns are twofold, and this is what I put in the letter to the commissioner. The first concern is whether or not we're making enough progress within the time we've had and the time we still have available, and secondly, if we can successfully complete the turnaround within the remaining time we have left. And my guess is, from conversations with many of the Bentley staff, as well as others, that there's agreement with that. I don't think any of us, yourselves included, have hidden from the fact that there's a ton of work still to be done. And we face that. My concern, one of them, is I'm not sure if hard work alone is going to get this done. I really am not. I think good intentions and hard work are critical to this, but I'm truly not sure, even to the point of talking about a variety of different options, some that have been brought up and others that aren't. We're continuing to cover new grounds. Tonight's not the end. It's just the next chapter in this story, and I think we need to keep that in mind. I also think that the mayor is correct. Matt, wave Matt, just so we know you're still with us, and Sarah, these are bad people. They've been cooperative. They've worked with us. I understand that they're painted with the larger versions of the companies that they worked for, but they have shown nothing but cooperation in my multiple meetings with them. They've shown cooperation with meetings with my staff, and they have been working hard to keep the best interests of kids in mind. So you may disagree with what's being done, or the fact that they're doing it, but I need to tell you, from the actions I've witnessed firsthand, they are not bad people, and they are trying to keep the best interests of our kids in mind. And this is what I know, and then I'll be done. Tomorrow morning, 4,500 kids are going to come into our classrooms, and most of them, God bless them, don't give a damn about what was discussed and what was shown on SATV tonight. What they want to know is, is that key adult in their life greeting them, smiling, putting the business and the politics of education aside in order to continue to advocate for their best interests? That's the question that faces us all as educators tomorrow morning. That's the priority that we need to give. And I need to say, I want to publicly thank not only the Bentley teachers, but all of our teachers for the hard work that's being done every single day, and I have no reason to expect that on my priority list tomorrow morning, those same kids are going to be greeted with the smiles, the reassurance, the caring and dedication that you guys bring to the classroom every single day. Again, I want to thank you for your efforts. I want to keep our focus right on kids, and I know, and I'm in the midst of the challenges right along with you, and I don't have it all figured out. I don't think any of us do, but I do know what I know about what you're bringing to the classroom and our kids every single day, and for me, that's the most important thing. So again, thank you for listening, and I'll leave it at that.
Move the question?
I've asked Madam Secretary to call the roll. A yes vote would be in favor of the approval of the MOU that empowers schools in Blueprint Network. No vote would be a negative vote. Ms. Pence?
Yes.
Ms. Emerald?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
No.
Dr. Walsh?
No.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Maire Drieschel?
Yes.
Matter carries by a vote of 5 to 2 in the affirmative. Dr. Walsh?
Five in the recess.
Dr. Walsh moved for a five-minute recess, seconded by Mr. Bryant. All those in favor, all those opposed, the ice covered.